I call to order this regular meeting of the City of Campbell, city council meeting on today, Tuesday, February twentieth, twenty twenty-four. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Bybee.
Present.
Councilmember Fratato.
Here.
Councilmember Scazola.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Landry.
Present. And I would like to invite our students from the STEM program, Manasvini, Sharakidi, and Ellie, to please come forward and help lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on down. Come on up. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Hey there. Thank you. And I'd like to call up Dr. Rial to also come up. Uh, we are here recognizing the Campbell STEM Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math winners of the Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association of twenty twenty-three Synopsis Championship Sci- Science Fair. And Dr. Rial is a board member of the Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association, and he's going to give us a brief statement about the science fair itself. Come closer, please, to the round, blushing things.
So firstly, I'd like to thank all of you, behalf of this Cacifa, the Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Administration. As president, I would like to thank the mayor, the council members, and the staff for honoring the twenty twenty-three winners from Campbell. Hardly congratulations to the students, uh, Manasvini Singh, Sanskriti Singh, and Ellie Zhao, and the parents, of course. Uh, a small step for the children to take and a giant step, if you will, for the county and the city. Because at the, at the end of the day, technology is very vital for the success of any nation, if you will. I was in their shoes many, many years ago, and I can vouch for the value that STEM programs do. And Santa Clara Science Fair has been in place for the last sixty-three-plus years. And this is the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Synopsis Science Fair. And so I'm really delighted that Campbell is doing this for the fresh students because it's absolutely vital. And I thank you all for this.
Thank you. And I'll just also note that through the annual fair competition, hundreds of the area students are challenged to go beyond their classroom studies to do independent project-based research. They work independently or in teams to address questions in the field of computer science, environmental science, medicine and health, chemistry, biology, and a half dozen other categories. Today, we are recognizing Manasvini Singh from Rowan Harrells Millie School for their project, A Better Understanding of Water Consumption Using Machine Learning. And Shari, Shari T., am I close? Close. Singh for Basis Independent Silicon Valley School for the project, The Segmentation of Lung or Ammon- Anomalies on Chest Radiograph X-Rays Using Machine Learning. And Ellie Zhao from Harker School for their project, What is the effect of different frequencies of noise pollution on the levels of mate attractions of hertz crickets, but I don't, can't pronounce the, uh, genus and species here. Um, so I would like to know if you guys would like to maybe make a one-minute statement about your project. Show, come forward.
Go first. Um, so hi, my name is Sinskri, and my project was focused on misdiagnosis. So one of the biggest problems in the healthcare industry is misdiagnosis. And I, for one, was always a big believer that this was like one type of error. But when I was talking to a radiologist, I came to find out that there's actually, this is a field of errors. There's many kinds of misdiagnosis, and one such is perceptual errors. And these take up like eighty percent of misdiagnosis errors. The other more common type of error is misclassification. And so when I did my research, I noticed a lot of computer science-based projects, they really focus on the misclassification, on this smaller thirteen percent. But I wanted to focus on the more larger eighty percent. So I was like, how would I really do this? And that's where I came up with a different kind of machine learning algorithm, which I named Chek's anomaly, uh, chest x-ray anomaly. Uh, and developed this model that could look at any kind of C, uh, any C X R and find all kinds of abnormalities and find the area when, in which it's located. Because perceptual errors are where radiologists or doctors are unable to find the correct spot of abnormality. Hence, they lead to misdiagnosis. Whereas misclassification is that they're looking at the right spot, but then it's when they don't know what they're looking at, or improperly classified. So I just wanted to give them the first step in this whole process, tell them, where is this abnormality within that whole C X R? And that's something computer scientists have not done yet. And so I really wanted to focus on that, making generalization across all kinds of diseases, seen or unseen within machine learning data. Thank you.
Thank you. Come forward.
Um, hi, my name is Manasvini, and my project was focused on helping people understand where their water and their money was going in their houses. Because right now, when you get a water bill, you can tell there's just an amount, and you have to just pay it. You don't really know, is it going to the gardens, is it going to the showers, or anything like that? And I thought, how would someone know where to cut down if they wanted to, say, reduce their bill? And so what I decided to do is, um, create this AI model that could detect where that, like, water was going. Was it going to the toilet, was it going to the sink, was it going to the hose, or anything like that? So what I did was, I hooked up a smart meter to my house, and I asked everyone in my family to mark what times they were using specific water appliances. And based off of that data, I trained the model, and yeah, this was my project.
Hi, um, I'm Ellie from, I'm a ninth grader in the Harker School. Um, and my project was essentially about analyzing, uh, like, different frequencies of noise pollution on the effect of, like, uh, like cricket mating attractions. Um, this was kind of like a, uh, like a environmental science kind of related thing, which I think is really, really important. Uh, and one, one thing, I, I was doing a bit of research, and one thing that I noticed was that, uh, people were analyzing, like, the effect of different traffic volumes, um, on crickets. But one thing that they haven't done is analyzing different frequencies. Um, and so what I did was, I tried to address that research gap by testing different frequencies of, uh, like, traffic noises on crickets. Um, and I found some sort of a pattern between that. Um, and I feel like, uh, the, the, the observations that I made, um, can sort of lead to new, like, solutions, um, in that sort of field.
Well, I have to say, I am extremely impressed at all three of you, and I think it's wonderful. I'm gonna come down and give you some certificates. Okay, so there's two in here. Okay, so maybe if you want to open up, so you can see all the channels here, uh, maybe open up this one. And, uh, I took pictures as I'm speaking at the podium. If you, uh, if I can, I'll send you the picture forward.
Thank you so much.
So much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it so much.
Thank you very much.
Sure, I, I, I just wanted, uh, again, to congratulate you and say, you know, obviously, your, um, scientific and analytical skill and talent is beyond question. But what also stands out, um, in, in your description of your projects is your poised confidence and communication. Um, and I'll just tell you, I think you'll find, uh, you know, if you continue advancing your scientific careers, not everyone has that, uh, skill, uh, you know, sometimes you get these brilliant scientific minds. But, uh, to really have that next level impact, the communication really is key. So I really encourage you to continue, uh, to hone that along with your, your, your passion and, and your brilliance that you so clearly, uh, display. And then that, that's a really, uh, rare and winning combination. Thank you all.
Dan, do you want to say something?
And also, um, indicate, uh, that you chose very advanced topics and, uh, subjects that, uh, have a significant level of importance. And I want to congratulate you on that, and, and also on your communication skills, and best wishes to you as you continue your studies.
Yeah, these are some of my favorite moments up here on the daisies. Uh, I mean, honestly, yeah, blown away. Uh, obvious, I can see why you guys were the winners, very brilliant work, uh, congratulations, of course. And, uh, I just, I just, I hope that you can promise me that the machine learning people, like, we're not gonna get the apocalypse right now, Terminator's that kind of a thing, just, that's all I ask, you know? Don't let your research be spoilt by the terminators.
And I just want to congratulate you all as well. Um, it's beautiful presentation, and again, brilliant topics, and I wish you well and, and hope that you continue in your, um, uh, in STEM, uh, education. And you're gonna become, uh, the next doctors and scientists and research people for us, for a better, better world. So thank you very much.
Yeah, and I'll just conclude in saying thank you all very much. I was very impressed by your presentation, your poise, your mannerism, your speech. I can't help but think you guys are gonna be so successful. So come back in ten years and tell us what great things you guys continue to do. And like I said, I took pictures of them at the podium. If you want to give the city clerk some contact information, we can send them pictures if you would like them. Thank you very much. And you are welcome to stay if you want to, but I will be not heard if you do take off, so. All right, thank you. Um, next on our agenda is communications and petitions, which I have none. Uh, then the item is oral requests. This is the portion of the meeting reserved for people who are wishing to address the city council or in any manner that is not on the agenda. Persons wishing to the council, to address the council, are requested but not required to complete a speaker's card. Speakers are limited to two minutes. The law generally prohibits the council from discussion or taking action on such item. However, the council may instruct staff accordingly regarding your oral requests. We have an oral request here from Mahmood. M A H M O O D. Yep, come on up. And you have two minutes.
Right. Uh, first of all, greetings to all of you, and thank you for your service to the community. I live in Campbell. I have lived here for twenty years off of San Thomas Expressway. Gale Drive, and there are a couple of stretches of streets there that have become a de facto RV park. People, RVs, usually typically older RVs, uh, pretty beat up, park in the street, and people live there. They come at night and, uh, go to RVs, sleep, and then early morning leave. And this has become a problem. Uh, there are, uh, pre-school, there is a pre-school within literally fifty yards from where these people park. And they are probably good people. It is just that, uh, police doesn't have, doesn't seem to have resources to enforce the seventy-two-hour law and also the, the other ordinance regarding camping or whatever. After ten, living in an RV, there is an ordinance, I forgot the details. Anyways, these are the kind of things that, uh, apparently there are no resources. And I'm here reaching out to the city. I have talked to several neighbors who are as equally or more, uh, dissatisfied with the situation. And so I'm reaching out here to see what does city do usually to address these type of things, and i- is it within your realm of responsibilities or not? And if so, what can we do? Do you need petition? Do you need what, to put some sign, enforce more rigorously, or whatever? This has become a problem. Again, families with children, RVs that park there, and we don't know where they are from, and stay there weeks in the, at a time, and leave there essentially. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I can't, we can't really respond in direct comment, but what we can do is ask staff to reach out to you, and we have your email contact information on here. Uh, can you make sure you can read it?
Yeah, I, I sent background information to, uh, Ms. Sanders.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, we'll have staff reach out to you.
Great.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next on our agenda is the mayor's announcements. Uh, beginning Tuesday, March nineteenth, the city council meetings will begin at seven PM and still will be held here in the council chambers. February is Black History Month. Black History Month, also known as African-American History Month, is an annual celebration of achievements by African-Americans and a time for recognizing their central role in US history. The theme of twenty twenty-four, African-Americans and the Arts, explore the key influence African-Americans have had in the fields of visual and performing arts, literature, fashion, film, music, architecture, culinary, and other forms of cultural expression. Let's celebrate diversity and inclusion during Black History Month to commemorate important black, oh man, I'm messing up here, sorry. Important black heroes and events throughout history. Yeah, try to do better now. Uh, income pact, income tax assistance is available at the Campbell Community Center through April ninth. The AARP Tax Aid Program provides tax assistance to anyone free of charge with a focus on taxpayers who are over fifty and have a low to moderate income. For more information, please visit campbellca.gov. The City of Campbell is committed to supporting our citizens by strengthening our neighborhoods. The city offers grant funding to help neighborhoods build a sense of community through its Neighborhood Associations Assistance Grant Program. The application period is now open through Friday, the twenty-third, that's this Friday, at five PM. Neighborhood associations within the City of Campbell are encouraged to apply. For more information, please visit our city's website at campbellca.gov. Join Valley Water's diverse network of leaders and advocates willing to serve the community as water ambassadors. Water One Oh One Academy is a free leadership program that educates and empowers community members to become leaders on local water issues. The application period closes this Friday, five PM, February twenty-third. For more information, visit valleywater.org. World Teen Mental Health Awareness Day is observed across the globe on March second every year. It is a day that aims to raise awareness about the mental health issues that teenagers deal with. Celebrate Teen Mental Health Awareness Day at the Campbell Community Center, Room Q Eighty-four, on Saturday, March second, from twelve to three, open to all seventh through twelfth graders. There will be resources available, free food, and raffle prizes. To pre, pre-register, please visit campbellca.gov forward slash slash teens. The Campbell Youth Commission is hoping a teen fair on Saturday, March ninth, from ten to twelve, at the Campbell Community Center.
For council direction and provided revised, uh, conditions or approval pertaining to those off-site requirements that would allow retention of the improvements along Kennedy Avenue and without the required additional right-of-way dedication. Uh, so that is before you tonight for a recommendation to the council to adopt a resolution approving a plan development permit.
So the council questions. Seeing none of it, we'll open up the public hearing. Uh, if the applicant wishes to, you can speak to the project or anybody else that would like to come forward to speak for the project. I don't see any, so I'm gonna pu- close the public hearing. Oh, he did?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, you're just waving, right? Okay, all right, we're good. All right, so closing the public hearing and bringing it back for council discussion or a motion? Sorry, Jim.
Um, just a comment, I would say how much I really appreciate the applicant's, uh, clear cooperation, willing us to work with the city in a positive way, evident at our, um, last meeting, and, and appreciate that, that we're here.
Yeah, and I'd just like to also thank staff and Roger for working on this. Like, we were trying to do it really quickly at the last meeting, and, uh, we did ask to have it come back. And so we do appreciate that you did come back, and I saw not only did you move the sidewalk back to the, uh, attached walk, but you also did, uh, move the driveway over, because I had a nine-inch question there, so you did move that over, and I do appreciate that. So if no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion. So I'll jump up.
So I'll move that the city council adopt a resolution approving a plan development permit.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bybee.
Hi.
Councilmember Fratato.
Hi.
Aye.
Councilmember Schizola.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Landry.
Aye, that motion passes, thank you. Uh, next item is number 13, a public hearing to consider the request of Mike Aminy on behalf.
Secondary.
No, that's usually on the title. Yeah, no, we don't need to read it a second time. Uh, alright, go back to, we, this is Mike Aminy on behalf of Don Barniston. To allow a subdivision from one lot to two lots. And construction of approximately 2,032 square foot new two-story, single-family residence. On the newly created lot on property located at 189 Sunnyvale, Sunnyside Avenue. And we have Tracy Tam, Associate Planner. Uh, give us a minute. Are you trying to share a screen?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not able to share a screen.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, absolutely, I can.
Thank you.
Good evening tonight, councilmembers. Oh, I suppose I don't need it anymore, do I? Okay, hopefully that's okay. Uh, so giving good evening tonight, city councilmember and Street Tam Associate Planner presenting on this application tonight. Uh, before you use an application for a planned development permit and a tentative subdivision map for property located at 189 Sunnyside Avenue. Project site is a 7,244 square foot property. Um, it's west of South First Street, um, along Sunnyside Avenue. It's within the planned development zoning district with a corresponding, uh, low. Medium density residential general plan designation. There is an existing single-family, uh, two-story, single-family residence on the rear half of the lot. Um, the front portion of lot is where the new home, um, before tonight, uh, is proposed. Uh, like I said, the application before you tonight is a planned development permit and a tentative, um. Subdivision map, the planned development permit is to allow for the construction of one, two-story, single-family residence. Approximately 2,032 square feet in size with an attached one-car garage. Um, and the tentative subdivision map is to allow for a lot split from one lot to two lots. Uh, just some background information on this application, the applicant did submit. Um, a SB 330 pre-application back in May of last year. Um, which was accepted by the city prior to the adoption of the current general plan and zoning ordinance. And so therefore, this application before you tonight is not subject to the current general plan and zoning ordinance. They were essentially able to lock in standards of the time in which the pre-application was submitted. Um, the, uh, if you can imagine, in terms of the site layout, um. There are the existing two-story, single-family residences located on the rear of the property, it backs a public alley. Um, and the new proposed two-story, single-family residence is located in the front of the property, it's actually located. Uh, closest to Sunnyside Avenue. Um, there will be an easement on the front lot to allow for ingress and egress to the rear lot. And so the rear lot will have the ability to take access off Sunnyside Avenue, even though there is a public alley towards the, the rear there. Uh, the new, uh, two-story, single-family home in front will have a 20-foot, um. Front setback, a 12-foot side setback, pretty much where the ingress, egress easement is located. A five-foot side setback, um, on the other side and a rear four-foot setback. And the proposed architecture is more of a modern craftsman style, like a modernized version of a craftsman-style home. Does require, it does contain, uh, horizontal wood siding, some stucco, um, but it is done in a more contemporary way. And that it is, uh, the color palette is supposed to be a white house, um, with black accent elements like for the door. And for the window, those windows. And. The application is subject to the Housing Accountability Act and the Housing, um, Crisis Act. Which does limit the city's ability to impose any kind of standards that are not objective. Um, back in late May of last year, the PD zoning. Uh, the, the PD zoning district at the time didn't have any kind of like development or design standards, um, and the project isn't. Located within an area or a neighborhood plan which does have those standards. Um, that being the case, there are limited objective standards that could be applied, things like the parking size dimension. The fence height, those are considered objective and they can be applied to the project. And the project does fall within the allowable density of the old general plan, um, which is. About 10 dwellings to the acre, where in a maximum of 13 is, uh, is allowed. In terms of the CECL review, the planning commission, um, is recommending that the city council find the project exempt from CECL. Uh, specifically utilizing the info exemption and the minor land development or land division exemption. Um, and the planning commission is recommending that the city council adopt the resolution approving the planned development permit and the tentative subdivision map. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you.
I have a question. Dan.
I have one question, you mentioned. That with the lot split, um, there would be an easement so that the, uh. People at the back could access that from Sunnyside Avenue. Is that easement wide enough to be a driveway, so it's like a flag lot in a sense, I mean, from appearance?
Correct, yes, flag lot isn't split to be a flag lot, essentially the easement does act as that access point.
I got a question about the whole front yard being paved, pretty much. What is the, does that meet our minimum standard? Uh, I know this goes under the old general plan, but it doesn't seem like there's very much front yard left that's not paved.
Right, um, there, as mentioned, there is the easement area which is paved, there's also the driveway to the one-car garage. Leaving the remaining portion of the front yard, um, to be partially landscaped. Um, unfortunately, the PD zoning district doesn't have standards regarding landscaping, or I should say. Does not have objective standards regarding landscaping for the front yard. There is another section in the municipal that talks about front yards maybe landscaped, um, but it is more subjective in nature.
It could have sworn we had something before, we had to have the first 25 feet. In landscaping, that's, doesn't apply to this then.
Uh, given that it's in a PD zone and it's not, the standard is not written in an objective manner, unfortunately, the city can't enforce that.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, I'll, at this point, ask, um, if the applicant, uh, or representative would like to speak on the project. As, as the applicant here.
I'm here, but I don't have anything in particular to share, unless you have a question.
Well, nobody had questions, so thank you for speaking up. Uh, alright, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or motion.
Uh, just a, a very brief comment, thank you for the, uh, presentation dealing with the technical challenges, it was still very easy to follow, which I appreciate.
Second.
Second, roll call please.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, that motion passes, thank you. Alright, now we're at item 14, acceptance of the fiscal year 2223 annual comprehensive financial report. And auditor's written communication on internal controls. And we have our presenter is Norrie Bong, our Assistant Finance Director. Hi, Norrie.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Landry, uh, Vice Mayor Lopez, members of the council. Uh, thank you, thank you so much for having me this afternoon or this evening. I will present it to you, item number 14, which is the acceptance of. The fiscal year 2223 annual comprehensive financial report, also known as the ACFR. As well as the auditor's written communication, uh, related to internal controls. Um, as the council is aware, uh, per the City Municipal Code, uh, the city is required to have an annual audit conducted on our financial statements. By an independent external auditor, uh, our external auditor is Ida Bailey, who's been with four years and today we have. Uh, Joe Escobar, who is the audit manager within the engagement that, um, has been with us for these past four years as well. Um, and the, the purpose of the audit is just to review the city's internal controls to ensure that. Um, the controls are properly in place, uh, they provide the security that it should have, we have the. Uh, the proper policies and procedures, um, and they're all adequate and effective. Um, and, and also importantly is the fact that our financial statements are presented fairly accurately, timely. And without material misstatements. Um, and so before going into the, the audit results, I wanted to provide the council just a very high-level. Um, highlights of our general fund, um, first and foremost, our general fund revenues excluding transfers. Um, were at $62.2 million at the end of fiscal year 23. Um, which is an increase of $5.8 million year-over-year. That increases due to, uh, our three, uh, major revenue sources, which is property tax, sales tax and other taxes. Um, with regards to expenditures, uh, our expenditures increased by eight, eight million dollars year-over-year. Um, related to mainly personnel costs, um, some supplies and services and contractual services. And. Uh, overall, revenues over expenditures exceeded, um. Expenditures by $2.2 million. Um, of that $2.2 million, we had a net transfer, um. That we normally transfer over to other funds to, to fund, uh, CIP and other operations of about $2 million. Uh, which provided the general fund balance, the general fund, um. A net increase of about $200,000 year-over-year. Um, so the general fund, fund balance increased from about $21.9 million to $22.18 dollars year-over-year. Uh, with regards to reserves, our economic fluctuation reserve and our emergency reserve both remain unchanged. Um, at $10 million and $3.2 million respectively. Um, and at the conclusion of the audits, uh, I'm happy to announce that we received an unmodified, clean opinion. That means there were no findings, no comments, um, and that's a testament to our director, Will Fuentes, as well as the staff that we have in the finance department. Um, their day-to-day work allows us to really present these financial statements, timing it accurately and so I, you know, I really appreciate them and. And the leadership will as well. Uh, so staff presented the financial statements to the finance subcommittee, um, on February 9th. Uh, which is comprised of Vice Mayor Lopez as well as Councilmember Bybee. Um, we discussed, um, internal controls overall, but specifically as it relates to invoice processing. And the city's purchasing card program, we also talked about, uh. Any corrective action plans needed related to the prior year findings, which have since been cleared. Uh, and ultimately, the subcommittee, uh, was satisfied with the presentation as well as, uh. Answers provided by both the auditors and staff. Um, and with the finance subcommittee's recommendation, its staff recommend, staff's, uh, recommendation that, uh. The city council is accept the fiscal year 23, uh. Annual comprehensive, annual comprehensive financial report as well as the auditor's written communication. Uh, relates to internal controls and at that point, I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, does the subcommittee want to make any comments? Anybody have questions, comments? Uh, anybody in the public would like to speak on this item? Nope, nobody, no takers. Thank you, Norrie, um, for the presentation and I'll bring it back to council for any discussion, Dan.
Just a brief, um, comment, I just want to echo your comment and thank you, uh. At Will and members of your staff for the continued excellent work in managing our finances and keeping us informed. How things are doing, so thank you. It's our job to keep the conference going.
I also want to thank staff and our outside auditor as well for, uh, the audit and it's always great to get a clean audit and, um. Uh, we had a good subcommittee meeting and so. Our, our finances are in good hands, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll just echo that, the only reason I didn't have, uh, more of a subcommittee report is, uh, because of the, the great work. Uh, so it's nothing really to add, but, um, thank you and thank you to, um, our auditors.
Yeah, thank you guys very much and like Will's over there with a beaming smile on his face, so we know he's happy. Uh, so thank you, uh, and at this point, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move that the city council accept the fiscal year 2023 annual comprehensive financial report. And auditor's written communication on internal control structure and the audit process as submitted with this report.
Second.
Roll call please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
That item passed, oh yes, then that item passes, thank you. Uh, next is unfinished business and we have no unfinished business and we will now go to council committee reports, who'd like to start? Dan?
Uh, just, I only attended one, I, one, uh, function this time and it was the early settlers' luncheon yesterday and, uh. Very well done, thank you to the chamber for organizing and to Dan for your. History lesson and to Carrie Perkins for a, a wonderful presentation, she did an outstanding job.
Um, yeah, I only have, uh, a, a couple, um, one is that we, we had actually a couple of meetings for the. Campbell Finance Subcommittee, one of the items of which you just heard about and, um, I, I think the other one should be coming back before, um. Uh, council soon, so I'll, um, I'll save those comments, but, uh, and actually there's going to be some follow-up before that on, uh. Uh, and investment firm recommendation, um, so I think, I think we're meeting on that soon. Um, we did have our first annual meeting of the League of Cities Peninsula Division, uh, the executive committee. Uh, planning out our events for the year, um, and, uh. For, for whatever reason, we not only ended up with a couple more events than we usually do by somehow ended up, uh, helping plan the majority of them. Um, but, uh, some really good ones coming up, including on climate change, sea level rise, uh, public safety and, and fentanyl. Um, and probably what, what's gonna, what looks like it's gonna end up being a roundup of, uh, you know, timely for the discussion today of not just. The housing bond, but all the other bonds, state bonds, local bonds that could be on the ballot and bringing some representatives to, to do some Q and A, so. Um, hopefully those things are of, of interest and helpful and I'll, I'll definitely share once we have, um, some of, some of the details. Uh, I think we actually have an early, um, just kind of saved the date calendar, so I'll try to send that out, um, if, if I can soon. Um, but otherwise, just the early settlers' luncheon as well and just a really fantastic, uh. Uh, uh, talk by, by Carrie, I appreciate hearing from our own councilmember Furtado. Um, and I have to put an award about the cheesy bread as, as while I'm still thinking about it. If you're there, you know what I'm talking about. Uh, but great, great, really great event.
Cheesy as in real cheese, cheesy, okay, Elliot?
Sure, uh, so starting with the VTA PAC, uh, so it's first meeting of the year, so for the most part, it was kind of an organizational meeting, uh. We were, uh, doing our little election, we were greeting new members, uh, and, uh, I should say that. We, uh, also were told who our, uh, brand-new, uh, vice chair of VTA was, our fellow Campbellite here, uh. I know it was mentioned last meeting, but I feel it's worth mentioning again that, uh, Sergio has that honor right now, very big deal, um. Had a little bit of a measure B update, uh, there is also a lot of public outreach on various projects, uh. Monterey Road corridor improvements, um, all these things, obviously, that for much more details, please go to the VTA website, check it out yourself, um. Uh, lot, some talk of congestion management, that is absolutely key, uh, lately, again, please reference VTA website for more info. Also, I also have to give mad props, if the early Settlers' Day event, yeah, the catering, we're talking about the cheesy bread, all the food was fantastic, and I'm just going to give a shout out, it was catered by Table and Terrace, and it was a wonderful event. Carrie's always great, but I always wanted to know the details on the story, I knew, I'm like, isn't that tree right here on the corner of our main intersection, wasn't that planted by Teddy Roosevelt, President Teddy Roosevelt? Not quite, if you want to know the whole story, I guess talk to Carrie or me, or any one of us who attended, it's a great story. But it was a great event, happy to go there every year, looking forward to the next one, and I hear that we are in store for an even greater spectacle next year, so looking forward to it.
Yes, I'll just thank all of you for attending the early settlers' celebration, it did turn out very nice, and you know, for many, many years, I said this at the, at the meeting, we in Campbell have indicated that the early settlers' celebration is the second oldest publicly celebrated event in the state of California, second to the Tournament of Roses. Well, it turns out that the Tournament of Roses was actually suspended and did not take place in 2021 due to the pandemic, and it also actually was suspended for about three years during World War II. So we really are the oldest continuous, because we did continue and we didn't interrupt and stop. And so we can brag that we are the oldest continuously publicly celebrated event in the state of California. So I agree with everything that you said about Carrie's presentation. Obviously, I knew the story of Teddy Roosevelt, but nothing to that level of detail and the number of speeches and what he did that day and so on, and that he actually spent the night in Campbell, believe it or not, so that was, that was excellent. I also wanted to mention that I did attend, and so some of us did, the Peninsula Division and Cities Association Joint Legislative Meeting that we had a while back here at the old headquarters of Hewlett-Packard, and, and I thought that was excellent. The legis, we had four legislators there, and the nice thing about it was although each of them gave a very brief presentation, they did answer a number of questions posed by elective officials of the county. And I thought a lot of the questions were good and some of the comments, so we had a chance to express our opinions as well. And then pardon me. Finally, I wanted to mention that I attended the recent meeting in the Silicon Valley Regional Interoperability Authority. And in the last storm, not the one that we just had in the last couple of days, but in the one before that, I'm pleased to say that all of the systems worked very well. There was no interruption of emergency communications amongst all of the emergency personnel in the county. Pardon me. And we had a few minor problems, so for example, there was one node that did lose power, but then it immediately went to the generator, unfortunately, the generator didn't work, but it immediately went to battery power, and when all of that was discovered, which was pretty short order, the whole node was just taken offline and just bypassed. But it brought to everyone's attention some of the problems there, which could easily be corrected. We had one microwave tower also where some of the bolts holding it became loose, and so the tower swerved back and forth and interrupted the signal. And as soon as that happened, likewise, it was bypassed almost automatically, and so communications were never interrupted. So we corrected that problem, tightened the bolts and, and so on. So anyway, and then SVRA, I think I mentioned to you, we are going to start to plan about a 10-year plan to increase our revenue reserves so that we can build up enough funds to replace the current equipment that we have with equipment yet to be defined, but more modern and better equipment in the near future, and it's going to be expensive. And so each of the cities will be asked to contribute slightly more for several years in their budgets so that it doesn't surprise us at the last minute that we have to spend, you know, 50-plus million dollars or something like that. Hopefully, the money will be there, so thank you.
Thank you. And I did attend, Ken made note that all five council members were at the early settlers' day, so it was very nice for us to all be there, and Elliot, you left the cliffhanger, the tree is not the original tree, but it is a sapling of the original tree that Roosevelt planted, which apparently was where Psycho Donuts is right now, was the original tree. But it is a sapling that's been there for quite some time, and Dan and Carrie both did wonderful presentations, so nice to hear kind of how Teddy Roosevelt went all over the area and ended up here in Campbell and then also spent the night, so that was nice. Friday, I went to Matt Mayhem and San Jose and Larry Klein of Sunnyvale hosted a manager or mayor's meeting. I think there was 10 of our cities that were there present, and we got to share kind of what our big topics are for the year, which obviously are housing, homeless, climate action. I think we all were in agreement on that, but what I thought was interesting, and they brought up this Berkeley lawsuit about gas that the the rules of no gas now with this lawsuit and the settlement is going to affect us potentially, Bill shaking his head, yes, because of our reach codes that we passed, this is going to come back to us. And then Todd, I was not able to answer our question of what are, if we're going to say it right, PCI of our pavement? What is our percentage? Oh, I couldn't know the answer either, so oh, then we're doing good, because some cities were down at 60%. Okay, well, I'll have to send them an email, though I forget which city said they were at 90, 95%. And I guess it has to do with their pavement and how good it's wearing and when you have to repair roads, but I'm sorry, I didn't know the answer. And I'd also think everybody noted how our front parking lot is fenced off. It's so exciting to see that they are going to, not just our unofficial or our official groundbreaking, but the contractor is going to now break ground, they're going to trench a sewer line from the street over, so this parking lot will be out for what, two weeks? And then they will be shifting to the new building and start the major excavation, and I'm so excited. And it's great to drive by the library and see the beams and the studs and the finished floors, and can't wait to see these projects move along. Very exciting. Very exciting, I know Gary's over there smiling. And thank you, Todd, to keep this moving forward, and we had our project manager on board now, yep, we've got some nodding heads over there. All right, everybody, thank you very much for being here tonight, and we will see you in two weeks on Tuesday at 7:30.